Order, please call the row.
Isom, yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Pooch?
Here.
Seaberton?
Here.
Dingey?
Here.
Gate?
Here.
Please join me in a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everybody. Brings us down to our first business is a public hearing on a liquor license protest brewery license number 5641. And it's a brewery company. Is there anybody here to speak to that tonight? Come on up.
My name's Jennifer Difold, I'm with her Lennon still brewing. I just wanted to give you an update from the last meeting when we spoke with you. Our conditional use permit was approved by the borough. And it's still within the 14 day protest time which is up within the 24th. Our building permit has been turned in and it's under review right now. We are working with Tongus Historic Museum to learn a little bit more about our building specifically that we are renting from. Well you want to embrace the history of Newtown and Hopkins which we feel is appropriate for a brewery. And we just want to let you know that we're doing the best we can and willing to for suggestions and anything we can do to help this move along. And any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to talk to the subject? See you then. We'll move to a close out public hearing, bring on a public hearing for ordinance 18877 many chapter 1112 telecommunications service and rates. Which is on the agenda down the road. Anybody have anything they want to bring up on that tonight? See you then, we'll close that public hearing. Brings us down to communications and I have a couple proclamations. The first one I'd like to read is for our deputy chief of police. He's been here for 25 years. And we're going to be losing him here at the end of the month. And we want to as a council to tell Josh how we appreciate his efforts and everything. We have a resolution here for him, we'll accept and let us know what his future plans are. This is resolution 182699, a resolution of the city of Ketchikan Alaska. May Josh Dawson for his years of service to the Ketchikan Police Department is established effective date. Whereas Deputy Chief Dawson has been employed by the Ketchikan Department since May 16, 1993. Will retire May 21st, 2018. Whereas Deputy Chief Dawson started his career in the patrol division in May 1993. Served as an investigator in the investigation division in 1997. Was promoted to sergeant in patrol in 2002, was promoted deputy chief in 2006. Was appointed as acting chief five times. And whereas Deputy Chief Dawson attended the Federal Bureau of Investigations National Academy session 238 in 2009. Whereas Deputy Chief Dawson has received numerous department unit commendations for safe driving commendations to police commendations to state council commendations, three meritas service commendations, one outstanding service commendation, one life-saving commendation. Numerous layers of appreciation from citizens and other agencies. Whereas Deputy Chief Dawson has been a dedicated and committed officer to the city of Ketchikan for more than 25 years. During which time he has directed his efforts to making the city of Ketchikan a safer place for everyone to live. He was instrumental in creating the police department citizens academy and has been active in boy scouts and youth football programs. Now therefore be resolved by the city of Ketchikan, by the council of the city of Ketchikan Alaska. As follows, the council of the city of Ketchikan Alaska recognizes and commends Deputy Chief Dawson for his dedicated service and significant contribution to the Ketchikan Police Department and the community council of the city of Ketchikan. Wishes Deputy Chief Dawson and his family all the success in their future endeavors. And this resolution shall become effective merely upon passage passed and approved by a, for a duly constituted quorum of the city council of the city of Ketchikan on this 17th day of May 2018. Deputy Chief, come on up.
So yeah, it's been, it's been a long time.
It's been a short time.
Just depends what's going on in the department. As far as my future plans, I have no future plans for the summer, I'm going to screw off.
Oh actually.
And then we'll be moving down to Seattle where my wife is working now, so.
If you catch some extra fish, bring them over.
I will do that for you.
Thank you. I have a second resolution for this evening. Proclamation with national safe voting week. Whereas an average 650 people die each year of voting related accidents in the US. Approximately 80% of these are fatalities caused by drowning. Whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat equipment or environmental factors. Whereas a significant number of voters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they been, had worn their life jacket. Whereas national safe voting week is observed to bring attention to important life-saving tips for recreational voters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water through the year. Whereas is the basic voting safety procedures are carrying life-saving emergency distress and communication equipment. Wearing life jackets, attending safety boat courses, participating in free boat safety checks and staying sober when navigating. Whereas the national safe voting week, whereas national safe voting week is the start of the year round effort to promote safe voting to encourage all those who vote to practice safe voting habits and wear a life jacket at all times while voting. Now therefore be resolved that I, Lou Williams, third mayor of the city of Ketchikan, Alaska do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2019 as national safe voting week. And along with the US Coast Guard and its federal, state and local safe voting partners encourage all voters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Is there anybody here to collect this tonight?
Yeah.
Come on up.
They're all here.
Thank you very much, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I'm here with my compatriots, behind me and over there. And we have the Coast Guard auxiliary, if you're not familiar with us, we're a group of volunteers that live and work in the community of Ketchikan. And promoting safe voting week coming up, starting this weekend. We'd like to remind everybody about life jackets and to wear those and to practice safe voting. If you want a vessel safety exam, they're free. You can contact us here at the auxiliary, we provide that as a free service. We also have boater safety classes, you can sign up for those. So with that, if you ever want to join the Coast Guard auxiliary, let us know. We're looking for new membership. And I want to thank the council and.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Alright, that brings us down to persons to be heard. Pat Carroll. Are you here? Come on.
Last good D O T is here, just we're on your agenda later on, just wanted to let you know that we were here and ready for you.
We're expecting you, thank you. Rob Shear?
Yep. Rob Shear, 614 Lotus. Before the council tonight is a two motions, one is for accepting documents that have been worked on between staff and Dawson and also the Great Alaskan Lumberjack Show for easements and right away easements, tideline easements. In the last couple of weeks, there's been one minor consideration that has come forward that while we want to accept documents just the way they are. There is a request that between the wharf, the fisherman's wharf and teagals that there's a section of the promenade, if it was shifted, that would relieve some complications. And those complications are, as we build the promenade to go around the back of the grandstands of the Great Alaskan Lumberjack Show, the promenade as located creates a pinch point of four feet. They would not allow any heavy equipment back behind the grandstands for maintaining the development property of teagals nor building of the promenade and maintenance. Then we also have an issue that the elevations that come up from the 1 to 1.5 from out into the tidelands to the uplands creates a pinch point on the other side of the grandstands of zero feet. So that would also not allow for access. So in negotiations with the fishermen's wharf, I have been able to negotiate a small change to the promenade as it's dedicated in the current easements that were put together by staff and the Great Alaskan Lumberjack Show to shift some of the promenade onto the wharf property. It doesn't change the core permit, it does not change the tideline easements with Dawson or the Great Alaskan Lumberjack Show. It just simply moves the easement towards the wharf property. By doing that, we get a 20 foot wide ingress egress at the back of the grandstands that will allow for not only access to the developed property but also to the promenade at any time for maintenance and installation. We're talking about 27 feet. That portion of the promenade, that easement can be negotiated with the city to move it onto the wharf at any time between now and the engineering process. So it's about 27 feet long. It doesn't change anything on what is actually the engineered aspects of the promenade. Shouldn't affect cost, it will take a little bit of staff time however, the fishermen's wharf and the Great Alaskan Lumberjack Show have their attorneys ready to put together the easements. And it is one easement, it's a right away easement. And then there would be an agreement with the city between the wharf and the city. So anyway, I have, if I might approach, I just have a quick document that I could give you.
Please.
Well go ahead, Mayor.
No, no, please.
Okay. So what I'm asking for tonight is to accept the motion on all the current documents and then a separate motion to see if we can direct staff to work with the wharf and the Great Alaskan Lumberjack Show to fine tune just the 27 feet moving it over to the wharf to allow for that ingress and egress. Because without the ingress and egress, we've got about 200 feet of promenade in the whole back of the teagals property that won't be able to be accessed by equipment. Okay.
Anybody have any questions to Rob? Nope, coming up in this later in the meeting.
Okay, I will be available for questions with regard to exhibit A and B.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, that brings Steve. McDonald, where are you?
Good evening, Mayor Williams, city council, my name's Steve McDonald, back again to talk briefly about the dock booth issues. A lot of the people back here work down in the, down in the industry there. Would have been a lot more of them standing there but it's 70 degrees out. If it was raining, I'm sure there'd be more of them. We have some concerns and Mayor Williams got back to town. And he had where the dock booths are on the dock, gone back to the port advisory board and I believe the recommendations were the three booths on berth three. One of them was to stay there on the corner closest to the cruise ship. One of them was to go where the rock garden is, is that correct? And one of them on the other side underneath the awning area for better access to the tourists. And that's actually been recommended and voted through by the ports and harbors. So I don't really see a, you know, a problem with it. And the other ones will probably be spread out a little bit. Was that a recommendation, Mayor Williams, also? The other ones to be a little bit further apart from each other, so we're not.
The ones on berth one?
Yeah.
I have not talked to anybody on that.
Yeah, so in the old days, we had the booths were about 15 feet apart. And your lease space was six feet off the booth, all the way around the booth. And the booths now overlap that, you know, so we need to get some space between us. It'll make business easier, it'll make it easier for the tourists. And it'll be much more of a complimentary thing for the city. The other thing in the last meeting is something crucial was taken away from us. It seems like for 25 years, that's kind of happened one thing after another. But we've had sandwich boards down there for 20 plus years. And the sandwich boards were voted to be taken away. And they're real crucial to our business. And because when you have a booth that's like five by five and you're paying 10, $15,000 a month rent, it's the highest per square footage rent in Ketchikan by far, nothing even close. And when you have two signs in front of the booth, and maybe a sign on either side. But when they're coming towards your booth, when you stand in front of the booth and you're talking to them, if all you have is a flyer in your hand, then you're forced to jabber and talk to them. If you have a sandwich board, they see the sandwich board 50 feet away, 70 feet away, 30 feet away. And they make up their mind before they get to you whether you're interested or not. And if you're a good salesman, you realize that body language is 90% of communication. If they're not looking at you, you're not interested, so you don't even try to talk. So one of the main goals that the city's wanted all these years is for us not to be hawking. So if you want us to hawk less and jabber less and be more successful, it is imperative that we get these sandwich boards back. I mean, they're so needed, it's ridiculous, they make us money. That's why they're there. And they're efficient, they're effective, and they're on the property that we lease. Okay? They're within six feet of the booth. We've had them down there forever and we definitely got to have them back if we're going to be successful. Does anybody have any questions? I'm trying to keep it short and sweet.
Anything for Steve? Yep. We're bringing it up.
I'm hoping you guys vote on those tonight because I'd like to see where we stand on those. If we have to pursue it again or something, I'm going to try to. Because with, we realized that going into the fall when they got taken away that, that that they were not unreasonable, they're reasonable, they've been down there for 20 some years. It's not unreasonable to reinstate them, it's totally reasonable to do it.
Thanks Steve.
Thank you.
Martha Thomas.
Hi everybody.
Hi Martha.
Hi, how are you? So my name's Martha Thomas and I have Alaska Discount Tours. And I'm talking on behalf of the Dock Fender Program. Like Steve McDonald said, last year prior was $60,012.51 brought every month to the city. And now it's $76,136 that is brought every month to the city. And that helps all the taxpayers and all the local people because we're local independent tour operators. And like Steve was saying, if we move dock three, the booths on dock three to help generate revenue to us, that in turn will generate revenue to both the city and the borough for sales tax. As an independent tour operator, every year it seems to get harder and harder to work in Ketchikan and work in the cruise industry. And this is my home and this is where I live and this is where I want to stay. And this is where I want to raise my kids. So, you know, I think we generate enough revenue and we help you guys and you guys need to help the independent tour operators because we are your people. Any questions?
Anything for Martha? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next is Charlie Aronson.
Hi, I'm Charlie Aronson and I'm really pleased to be here tonight to introduce my Rock Festival to everyone on the city council. And I appreciate all the work that I have, or cooperation I've had from Mr. Corporal and Mr. Dixon and fire marshal grooms. So I believe that you have received something in your pocket that kind of gives you an overview and it'll be coming up in the report tonight. And so I'm here to answer any questions and specifically to address any concerns of the city council because we want it to be a really fantastic, family fun day with great music and good food and hopefully lots of sunshine.
Anybody have anything for Charlie? No, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Hudson. We enjoy having you.
I'm Michelle Masden, I represent Island Wings. And I have property at 1245 Tongous Avenue. I got handouts for you guys, I always come with handouts. So I'm just going to kind of read to you tonight because I'm always really nervous up here. But basically, I want to talk to you about three things this evening. One is the prop wash event again, and only briefly because I had some pictures for you. So if you want to start there, we'll start with the pictures. One of my things about the berth four expansion has always been the problem with the prop wash and how that affects multitude of things, airplane operations and pilings, foundations of the buildings. So these photos were taken under the foundations where things are being eroded. And in picture number one, you can see the photographer's got his foot underneath the cement piling. So this base of this piling is only a year or two old. And already beneath it, the silt has been eroded enough that he can stick his foot underneath of it. In the second picture, you can see a close up of that area where the footing of the piling is resting just on some rebar. So that, as soon as that rebar rusts out, the whole piling is going to fail. In the third one, you can see when a piling actually does fail, what happens is the footing comes out from underneath of it, it sloughs off. And that piling is actually just hanging from the beam. So you could, you could go down under the building and push on that piling and it's just swinging there. It's actually, it's actually causing more damage to the building than it's helping because it's creating a weight like pulling the building down. And then in the very last photograph, you can see, on the left hand side, you can see where all the big rocks have been kind of washed away which kept, kind of helped hold the sediment in place. Whereas on the right hand side, it's still there, it's more uphill, so they're less affected by the sediment erosion. Anyway, it's just more in support of my issues with the potential problems with the berth four expansion. The propellers that would be potentially parked in berth four if the suspension goes through are the largest propellers in the world. They're three stories tall and there's three of them. And they can direct them in any direction they wish to get the boat to maneuver however it needs to be maneuvered. And so the problem of erosion on not just my property but everyone who is adjacent to a cruise ship berth is suffering from these foundation issues. And I just wanted to document it and show it to you. Additionally, in the berth four lease, the current lease that you guys have with berth four, even the owners of berth four were worried about their own pilings being degraded. So they put in an addendum to their lease, addendum one dated 5/20/2008. It says both the Ketchikan Dock Company and the city agreed to implement a scour, remediation and protection plan for berth four. So they put that in there because they were worried about their own pilings. And clearly they should be because they're the closest to the ship. But they are going to make the city of Ketchikan pay for those, any maintenance that may be required to fix any destruction that might happen to their own pilings. But there's no consideration to what will happen to the private properties shore to berth four. There's no, no one's come up and said, gee Michelle, you know, if we wipe out your pilings, we'll fix it for you. Whereas berth four has a lease with the city and the city's going to pay for that. I actually spoke to someone, the sourdough bartender the other day and I was told that the building shook pretty badly on Tuesday when a ship pulled out of berth two, whether it's using its, either bow thrusters or as pod propellers. I wasn't there, so I don't know which one it was. But she said the whole building shook for a while. The second thing I want to talk to you about is the commercial vessel passenger excise tax. Most of you know what that is, that's the CVP funds that are collected by the state of Alaska. This excise tax is collected by the state. They collect $34.50 per passenger. The state keeps $29.50 and the city and the borough each get $2.50. For what's worth, I think the borough should, you should get the boroughs to count, but that's another subject. As you all know, last week, the Alaska State Finance Committee deliberated Senate Bill 142. This bill originally was directing $3 million of state CVP funds, that's the money that, the $29.50 that the state keeps, to be allocated to the enhancement of berth four, which is privately owned by the Burdo family and cruise line agencies. I disagreed with this directive entirely and wrote to all of our senators and representatives. I asked them to direct the $3 million towards city owned berth one, two and three. And in the end, the committee voted, the finance committee voted to appropriate the funds to allow the city of Ketchikan to choose. So now, I'm sure you guys are aware, you get $3 million, you can go spend it on whatever you like. And I'm asking you to spend it on berth one, two and three. I feel this public money should be spent on public property as it benefits all of Ketchikan and not just a few individuals. If the city intends to hand out $3 million to private enterprise and get nothing in return, I assure you there'll be a long list of businesses waiting at the city's doorway for $3 million. I'll be the first in line. So just keep in mind when you're thinking about how to spend this $3 million that a vote to expand berth one, two and three is a vote to invest state money, public money and city monies in city owned property. And a vote to spend public money on public projects benefiting everyone, not just a few private individuals. And the last thing I want to talk to you about is the renegotiation of the berth four lease. And I know that you're going into executive session tonight, so I just wanted, I had a few comments about that. The existing lease with berth four started out as a 30 year lease with two 10 year extensions. That takes us into 2039. That's a number that seems unreasonable, but there it is. And as I understand it, they don't, there's no renegotiation necessary unless berth four is going to be expanded. So the lease can remain in place as it is unless there's going to be some change to berth four. The thing about the existing lease with berth four, it's very one sided against the city. The Ketchikan Dock Company fronted the money to build the facility, but ultimately the city's paying for everything. They make the lease payment, they pay for the property's insurance, they pay for the maintenance of berth four. They even pay for the Ketchikan Dock Company's property taxes. So you know, I'm a landlord and I charge a fair rent, not overly so. But I don't expect my tenants to pay rent and my property taxes, rent and my building insurance, rent and pay for the pilings that are falling away under my building. They just pay rent. But the city pays for all of these things for berth four. And at the end, at the end of this 30 year lease, the city's not going to own it. Ketchikan Dock Company's going to own it. That's not the worst of it, the structure, the rent structure is awful. The rent structure's graduated and ultimately has no upper bound, particularly when larger cruise ships come. And I know you guys are somewhat familiar with this, but I did some numbers for you. When the, when there's between 820,000 and 900,000 people in Ketchikan, berth four receives $1.8 million base lease plus $7.50 per person over 820,000 passengers. Now the city collects only $7 per person, but they're paying berth four 750 per person, which seems a little odd to begin with. And also, they only collect, the city of Ketchikan collects $7 per person for everyone who comes into berth one, two and three. But they only collect $4 for every person who comes into berth four. I don't understand why we collect less money for a private berth than we do for a city berth, that doesn't seem realistic. And I don't see why we pay berth four more than we collect, that doesn't seem realistic either. It gets even better when the visitors to Ketchikan exceed, go between 900,000 and 1.1 million. Ketchikan Dock Company receives a base lease payment of 2.4 million plus 30% of the per person tax for each passenger in excess of 900,000. And to list an example of that, and I got these numbers from Bob Newell, your accountant. In 2017, the base lease payment to Ketchikan Dock Company was 2.4 million and their portion of the per person tax was 137,000 and change for a total lease of 2.5 million. So it's costing us a lot. But things get really ugly when we go above 1.1 million people, which is going to happen when we start bringing in any one of these bigger ships regardless of which berth we expand. And in this case, the Ketchikan Dock Company's going to get $2.7 million as a base lease plus $27,000 for every year that we exceed 1.1 million with no upper limit. So this is a geometric. So this is a geometric escalation of payment to them. You know, each berth gets one quarter of the number of ships arriving, more or less, however, when computing what the rent will be on berth four, the total headcount, the total Ketchikan tourist headcount, not just the count which arrive in dock four. So they take 25% of the people, but they don't provide 20% of, 25% of the income, and I'll get to that in a minute. For the last nine years, the city of Ketchikan has paid slightly over $22 million to the Ketchikan Dock Company in lease payments. That's enough money to have built the berth in the first place, would have been paid for by now, and I know that was a different council, different days, so I'm not shooting any arrows here, it just, it is what it is. In addition to the 22 million in lease payments, the city of Ketchikan has paid out $339,000 in maintenance costs to berth four, $226,000 for insurance to insure the berth four property, and the city of Ketchikan is also paying the Ketchikan Dock Company's property taxes, as per the lease, to the tune of $1.4 million, 1.443. The total cost to the city to lease berth four for the last nine years is $24 million, Now, the city collected $63,197,773 million for warfage fees, but 38% of those monies went to berth four. Given that the other berths are generating a minimum of 75% of their revenue, they should each be 25% of the costs. But berth four's costing us 38% of our total revenue. And the other berths are, you know, hanging in there at 20%, I guess, or maybe the city's making up the difference, I don't know, but I just, it doesn't work out as good math. If the lease, if the Ketchikan Dock Company's lease runs the full term of 30 years, their rent's gonna exceed $95 million, that's a big number. In addition to their 30-year lease, they have two 10-year renewals, and if their 10-year extensions go on, that escalated number goes up, because there's no upper limit, $133 million. That's enough to build all four berths, and have some leftover money to buy Michelle a new dock. The Moffett and Nickel report that I, that we all have, talks about enhancing or rebuilding berth one and two for the expansion, they have a projected cost of the combined one and two to be between $37 and $39 million. The amount of lease payments that we're gonna make to Ketchikan Dock Company over the next 30 years will be double to triple that figure for the use of a berth the city doesn't own. So when you deliberate whether or not to renegotiate a lease with Ketchikan Dock Company, a vote to expand berth four is a vote to invest money into private enterprise instead of city-owned property. A vote to renegotiate the lease with Ketchikan Dock Company is a vote to keep the city of Ketchikan indentured to the owners of berth four for even longer than they are already, and for more money than they are already. It's also a vote not to care about what happens to the businesses and property owners who work and own and live shoreward of berth four. You know, at the end of the day, people come to Ketchikan not just to be on a cruise ship, they come here to do things and see things and interact with people. And I'm fortunate enough that I have a job that I love, and people love to go flying, and they love to see beautiful things, and I'm rewarded every day from those people. And I want to keep flying, and I'm not against the cruise ship industry, I just think we need to be sensible about what's good for Ketchikan, and what's good for the public. So I ask you to spend our dollars wisely, and in the best interest of everyone. Thank you.
Hello, everybody, and thank you for letting me come up and speak. I'm a local, independent coach driver. The A-boards on one and three are amazingly bad. Not just for how many tours I get, but by not having them, you can't also direct people. You have tourists coming out and going to get hit. Again, I'm on every one of these docks every day. We have more and more tourists every year, it's scary, very scary. So you want to make sure that, again, the A-boards, I'm gonna lose money. I live here, I pay rent here, I pay food here. I get less money with those A-boards gone. But also, again, less protection, if they're placed right, to get everything, to keep the people kind of corralled, okay, if that makes sense to you. If you've ever been down on the docks, and have people, excuse me. If they run into an A-board, I don't care if they see who the company is, it's gonna keep them corralled, okay, it's a safety thing. Again, being a local, a Kinkit tribal member, I want to support our community. The rent here is getting crazy, okay? So you guys are losing money if I don't stay the whole season, right? The end of the season, I don't stay. Other people don't stay from the people selling the tours, being able to be outside their booth and selling them, so you're gonna lose the money, right? They're gonna leave in the wintertime, and they're gonna take their dollars with them and not pay those taxes, right? Because they can't afford to live here year-round, because now, we're making far less money than we were. In the last two weeks since the season started, I've had so many tourists that are repeat customers, and come to Alaska, and they flat-out say, "What happened?" I'm like, "Look at the big ships behind you, who's winning? Who is winning?" They are. For some reason, they're controlling certain things, that I'm getting less and less people on my coaches. I was full all the time. Now, I take out yesterday, four people, four people, now, one-ship day, I get it. But I should be at least 14 on a one-ship day? And I'm a pretty dang good cruise ship guy. I did ride the ducks in Seattle, my grandmother's from Kowalk, my dad from Cordova. I moved back up here for a reason, 'cause I love it. I don't want to leave, I don't want to go south. I want the money to stay here. I just hope the council understands, it's not just me, but the people selling the tours, the revenue takers, that kind of thing, but we're gonna chase everybody out by not having that. The cruise ships are gonna win. They're gonna win. They're pushing out locals, okay? Locals are the ones that are gonna keep the revenue in town year-round, year-round. Not just for the five-month season, but they're gonna stay when they can make enough money to make it through the season. And that's the true fact. You know, I'm very passionate about this, I'm not used to, I'm just docking in front of a bunch of people, but not you guys, so I'm sorry if I'm a little rambled here. But truly, you guys really need to think. Locals, locals, locals. If we bow down to the cruise ships, and their little thing, an A-board, an A-board, how big is that? Truly. But again, it also can work as a barrier, not just to corral the people to the booths, but the booth space, again, when they're all crowded, now they're crowding out into the driver's pass, and again, they're not lucky. They're on their cellphones, they're from every country in the world, they don't understand, stop. Should be international, right? It's not. Let me tell you, they are backing into our ways, again, by having a CDL license and everything else. We go through the training, we go through the process, we go through everything it takes to be safe. It's not safe, one, by not having the A-boards to corral them, or your people to be outside of their booths far enough to corral them, to go, "You're not gonna be safe, they're talking to somebody else." You're done, you truly are. If you guys want to go on a tour, I'm sure my owner would say, "Go on it," and just sit in the front seat and watch these people, because it is getting crazier and crazier with the number of people getting off these ships, and with the superships coming in this year. I can't even imagine, I truly can't. But if we can't sell to compete with the cruise ships, right? Because they're, we all know where that's going. Independents are gonna be out, cruise ships are gonna make all the money, all their people are gonna go, take all the money out of Ketchikan. What does that do to our tax base? It messes up bad. Again, keep it year-round, keep it here, let these signs be out there. Again, for a number of different reasons. Don't think of one, oh, just the independents want to make more money, no, the independents want to stay alive. And that's us. Everybody here on the council has people that are part of the industry. Keep our money here, please. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Ken. I don't see any, thank you very much. All right, that's the last person signed up to speak to the council. Is there somebody that didn't sign up that'd like to address the council tonight? Come on up.
Well, my associates did a very good job in introducing
Make sure you introduce yourself.
Mary Stevenson, introducing independent tour operators need to be heard on this, as this pay-for-play contract between the cruise ship companies and the transportation companies that are hired to take the cruise ship passengers out on their tour, versus the independent tour operator who is standing by locally with their equipment to offer some very interesting and, interesting tours. What you have in front of you is issuing or bringing to light some lost terrain we lost over the last couple of seasons. One in particular, this season, we lost Mountain Point. For some reason, a couple of fishermen taking a day off or playing hooky from a job complained that there were too many tour buses and tourists walking the very large parking lot, and complained to whomever and made it enough for ports and harbors to take that parking lot away from a multimillion-dollar industry. If this parking lot was overseen by the cruise ship transportation company, you better believe they would have found an agreement to make everybody happy. These guys come in, it takes 15 minutes to launch their boat, they park their trailer for four, five, and six hours, go fishing, have fun, and in the meantime, what the city has just done through ports and harbor is limited this parking lot for the tourists, which is high volume of wildlife, whales, fish, and such. So to get even, fish and game proceeded to say king salmon season is off limits, oh, and now the fishermen aren't going to be able to go out fishing. Secondly, I'd like to point out the Herring Cove, we've lost ground on it. I've been working with Department of Transportation, Mr. Epstein, last summer season, he gave us a highway-whatever guardrail, and this, two weeks ago, I got him to remove a rusty piece of road equipment that had been buried in amongst the salmon berry bushes. So now, I'm in hopes of finding some volunteers who will get in, and at their state's right-of-way to landscape that area, come in with another guardrail to expand Herring Cove, so that the independent tour operators who could have as much as 100 to 200 people there in any course of a 30-minute time, to have more space in order to enjoy the wildlife that Herring Cove offers. Third is Saksman. Saksman is increasing the admission to the tour operator from $3.50 to $5. They boast that they can see 120,000 visitors in their summer season, and yet, that $400,000 is never enough, and they will try to seek support money, financial money to restore their totem poles and build new buildings. The Klan House, the Carving Center, has never been open to the independent tour operator. It comes money to repair those and build those new buildings from the commercial passenger vehicle excise tax money, and still, we are not permitted to go in there with any kind of walk-in. The bathroom, which costs $25,000 to $50,000, as I understand, also came from public funds, is closed when the parking lot attendant leaves after his four- or five-hour shift. With the only bathroom available at the gift shop, it is very difficult to say to a person in badly needed of a restroom, "You have to go around there and use the bathroom," but "Oh, by the way, could you stay with the group with the commentary, because you're gonna get lost, they're gonna start wandering into the gift shop, and they're not going to come back to the bus in time." So in summary, this play for, the pay-for-play game that the city and the borough is doing on independent operators is not giving us back the benefits that we are owed when subscribing to tourism. Tourism is nonpartisan. It has no colors, it doesn't elect anybody here, it's here to play, it's here to have fun, and to go and tell their friends and their neighbors how wonderful Ketchikan is, or was, or how miserable it was, because the hospitality was rude and inconsiderate. As simple as that. A natural disaster can easily wipe out our businesses tomorrow if we don't take care of it today. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Come on up, sir.
I'm Rick Thomas, 245 Heckman Street, representing myself and Sourdough Tours. I went to the port meeting the other day, I was one of the only vendors, of the six vendors that actually showed up for that. I think we had a pretty good meeting, we got a unanimous decision to where to put the booths, Mr. Flor, I know you were there. On dock three specifically, dock one, they're doing a great job down there, love how it's coming around the corner, it works for everybody, it's safe, as well as potentially profitable. On dock three, however, it's a safety issue, if nothing else. Where they're put, right there, those three right in a row. You have, in the last year and a half, we've had two people hit in crosswalks with a town of 14,000 people. One got killed, one got hurt. Okay, we're gonna put a quarter million people up a ramp in front of buses, and we're coming down on dock four, so I guess the point I'm getting to is where they're located. The, what we came up with at that meeting was keeping one by the sidewalk, one by the rock park, and then one underneath by Saukai Sam's, closest, not closer over to Saukai Sam's, but underneath there anyway. And I think that, like I say, alleviates the problem of safety as well, it makes it a good viable product for the vendors. Something else that Steve didn't bring up was that we also came up with five, or nine-by-12 handheld signs, and it was also unanimously decided that that would be a good thing, double-sided, two of them, so the two people out front of the booths could actually hold them up and utilize those for sales. One thing that was not brought up was the A-frame signs. I'd love to see them come back, it was nice to have them in the past, we've had them for years. I've been doing this 21 years, and it was nice to have them, you know, right there, so you could have some people selling here and here. It makes it a little more profitable for us, like I say, we've paid an awful lot of money for those spaces. It's, like I say, the most expensive spots in Ketchikan, basically, you know, per square foot, so. I guess that's it, do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys.
Anybody else want to address the council? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, my name is Norm Neri, I'm a lifelong resident, and what I'd like to touch on is the welcome march on mission. Alaska's first city, king salmon capital of the world, well, there are no more king salmon. The first year in the history of Ketchikan that they're gonna have, they're gonna bypass the king salmon and have a coho derby. Now, I don't know where the city council stands on this issue, but Ketchikan Indian Community, along with Central Council, Kinkit Haida Indian Tribes of Alaska, along with Matla Katla and Saksman residents, we've been addressing the transboundary water issue with Canada, and we finally got the, our capital elected officials to come on board, and we finally got on board, and we finally got the Alaska delegation. We've been battling this issue for over eight years now, and I don't know where the city stands on it, and I don't even know if you guys care about the King Salmon, but if, uh, if there's no overall feeling about this issue on the King Salmon, take that sign down on Mission Street, throw it in the garbage dump, because we are no longer the King Salmon capital world. I've talked to, uh, some of the hatchery managers here in Ketchikan, and I thought, well, maybe it would be a good idea to build a couple more, and he said, "No, we don't want to do that, we want to keep the Alaska King Salmon wild stock and try to get it to grow." Well, the only way they're gonna do that, folks, and, uh, these so-called collegiate biologists that work for the Alaska State Fish and Game, you cannot outsmart Mother Nature. And it's not due to, it's not due to overfishing the King Salmon, they're taking the food from those sea life that feed on the herring, and what the state of Alaska needs to do is shut down the herring fish for 12 years, let that stock grow, get back up to where it used to be, or at least hack what it used to be. But I think, uh, and I don't know where, if the city council's on board with, with the state of Alaska, uh, on battling the Canadians on those mines that they abandoned, where all that toxic waste is flowing into the Eunuch River and other major tributaries that flow into the southeast Alaska. But I think we all better wake up and get on the bandwagon with, uh, KIC and, uh, Central Council and fight these guys over there. And we finally got the, uh, the Resource Director back in Washington, he kinda scratched his head and looked at the issue. I know Governor Walker and, uh, Byron Malat are working and have been working with the Canadian government, but, uh, they're hell-bent on building that KSMI, and that, that, uh, holding pond that they're gonna be building, it's gonna be twice the size of the Grand Cooley Dam. Now, they had a major disaster a couple of years ago, and they never disclosed how much environmental damage it did, but I know it did a hell of a lot of damage to, to the spawning streams that flow into southeast. Thank you.
Thanks, Darb. Anybody else want to address the council tonight? Come on up, sir.
Good evening, uh, my name is Marco Angarano, 320 Baden Street, I own Ketchikan Tour, and, uh, one of the things in this debate that I just wanted to, my two cents on the table is, uh, I know that the job of the harbor master, everything going on the dock, it's not an easy job, uh, I've seen some positive changes. Steve Corpern has a difficult job, and I think he's doing a good job. One of the things that are, uh, one of the sensitive points have been the signage, uh, they talk about an A-frame, the, uh, things that have been adjusted, and I just wanted to recall a little bit of a chain of events that led to this. If you guys recall, uh, in the winter of 2014, there was a big debate about the so-called, the infamous hocking ordinance that were eventually, talked about all the hocking and lots of changes were made there. Uh, one of the consequences of that ordinance that the city did was to eventually the, the, the borough, which used to regulate the signs, they used to have, um, a figure called the cups, the famous cups which were the conditional use permits, and the conditional use permits is what regulated the city booths, it's what regulated, uh, any food vendors, regulated Dock Four, which is private property, and those cups, which were dropped last year, uh, essentially established the rules for signage. So my question to the council, something that I haven't been able to get a clear answer from either the city or the borough, is what, uh, since there's no regulations anymore as far as cups go, uh, if somebody wants to put a, any vending site, whether it's a table, whether it's standing outside a door, always on private, private property, the, um, borough basically issues a permit, it's perpetual, you don't have to renew it, as long as they agree that it, it's in ordinance with the zoning laws, then they're okay. Uh, so what happened now as far as everything in the downtown area, especially the, the commercial, the touristic part, uh, was regulated by the borough, signages were included. So apparently now it's the city regulating it, the borough, that's, uh, because that would answer a lot of the questions on who has to decide on what we do with signage, whether it's a handheld side, an A-frame, if it's four signs. That was the original spirit of these regulations that, uh, that Mr. French had taken, had been executing for years. I don't know if somebody could maybe clarify that?
Let me give it a try. I think after we passed that, then it went to the city that, um, so we didn't have the borough doing one thing, the city doing the other, Carl, clarify with me. So aren't we, um, you know, through that ordinance, we've limited things that could happen or where you could do it, but it's the city that makes the, um, decisions now on that, is that correct, Carl?
We make the decisions on the hocking and parking relative to the six dock vendor leases. We, the council approved control of signage through those leases. The borough still retains the right to, to sign enforcement within the downtown area.
We had to apply for sign permits for each other, which we did, and we received.
Okay. Oh, so the borough's still on that? Okay, so is this an issue that eventually we would have to address the borough, the city, uh, I'm, you know, just-
You have to address both. Okay. I'd have to pull up that ordinance again, because we worked on that for a while, and I'd have to get re, um, familiarized with it. I know it eliminated some areas where we could, uh, set up shop downtown, I mean, I think if you're on private property, you can set up anywhere, but, um, I'd have to relook at it again.
Okay, well, uh, then I guess the ball's on you accordingly.
Thank you.
The winter will, uh-
Yeah.
Thank you.
You bet. Anybody else want to address the council? See you none, we'll move into the agenda. Thank you, everybody. That brings us down to consent agenda, I have a couple I'd like to add. Unfinished business A1, um, unfinished business B1, the telecommunications rates, oh, sorry. Um, 7A1, the Joss's, um, resolution, 7A4, uh, the National Electric Code, no, no one's complaining on that, went pretty easy. And then, um, 7B3 and 4, the two awards on the KPU tree trimming and buying a new work truck.
Two and-
Two and- Two and three, excuse me.
Six.
Six A1. If you are through, thank you.
7A1.
Correct, 7A4.
7B2.
And then 7B2 and 3. All right, um, do we have a motion to consent?
So, I got-
Moved in second, and Madam Plou, can you read that?
Approval admittance regular city council venue, May 3rd, 2018. Award of contract number 1808, Bayview Cemetery Maintenance and Operations. Contract number 1719, final report, upland planning to support expanded marine facilities and larger cruise vessels with Moffett and Nickel. Approving library services agreement between the city of Ketchikan and the Ketchikan Gateway Borough. Memorandum of Agreement between the city of Ketchikan and the pioneers of Alaska, Igloo Number 16, for waiver of the organization's solid waste dumpster collection fee. Executing the refurbishment of Bailey Diesel Generator Number Four cylinder heads from the competitive bidding and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, that's with Cast Iron Welding Services Limited. Ordinance number 181878, approving a lease agreement between the city of Ketchikan and Ketchikan Visitors Bureau Incorporated for certain real property located on berth two and berth three of the Port of Ketchikan, Alaska, in second reading. Ordinance number 181877, amending chapter 11.12, telecommunications service and rates of the Ketchikan Municipal Code, and that's in second reading. Resolution number 182699, honoring Josh Dawson for his years of service to the Ketchikan Police Department. Ordinance number 181880, amending subsection A and B of the Ketchikan Municipal Code 19.12.010, entitled National Electric Code adopted, to adopt the 2017 edition of the National Electrical Code, and that's in first reading. Award of contract number 1804, utility tree trimming, and that's with Carlos Tree Service Incorporated. And the award of contract number 1803, work trucks with Vicford Motors.
Anybody have any questions on anything? Call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Pfeifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yes.
Ziggy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
All right, that passes 7-0, and that brings us down to finished business, um, 6-2 liquor license application brewery. Whoa, did I forget one? Excuse me. No, that's consent. Okay, that brings us down to brewery protests. Um, we have until June 22nd to do anything, do we have anybody who wants to do anything?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to move that we withdraw the protests, since we, they have submitted plans and we have the opportunity to, um, regulate them based on their passing the building inspection and the fire marshal inspection.
Moved in second. Anybody want to speak to it? Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Ziggy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yeah.
Kuz?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Pfeifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Hey, that passes 7-0, that brings us down to new business 7A2, and that brings us, Pat, are you still here?
Still here.
We're ready for your presentation.
Okay. I can sit here and do it?
You could just stand at the thing there, sit there, get some lights. I don't see it, get the cap off?
There's a cap on it.
That shows me my problem.
All right, well, thank you, folks, for having me here tonight. Um, I am Pat Carroll, from the Alaska Department of Transportation and South Coast Region's Creek Construction Engineer. Um, my job is pretty much to design projects, capital improvement projects all across the South Coast region. Um, I'm also joined here tonight by Tom Renninger, who is our South Coast Deputy Director. Um, I have Dick Winters here, who is the South Coast Construction Engineer, and Garrett Paul, who is the Project Manager for the Front Mills Stedman Project that's under construction currently in Ketchikan. I'm going to try and get through this pretty quickly, it looks like you guys have quite an agenda in front of you this evening, so I'll try to take as little of your time as possible. Um, I do want to answer any of your questions that come up, so if you do have any as I go along here, please feel free to step in and ask any questions that you have. Um, gonna start with just a little overview of the South Coast region, and talk about project work that we're doing in Ketchikan, um, some projects that we completed last year, department completed in Ketchikan last year, and then talk about projects that we have coming up in 2018, and then just give some resources for getting additional information on the U of T. Uh, just to talk a little bit about South Coast region, um, in 2015, the department changed its regional boundaries, and what was typically the south coast or southeast region changed to south coast, and we took on, um, the additional duties of Kodiak Island, the Aleutian Chain, and the Alaska Peninsula. Um, South Coast has about 1,500,000 miles of highway to maintain, we have 19 maintenance stations, and one, much of what we gained with the new regional area, um, that was given to us was in the airport category, so we have 69 airports that we are in charge of, capital projects and maintenance, or, um, representing, we, we serve 1996 communities, well, boroughs, 50-plus city governments, 47 Alaska Native tribes. DOT has a lot of work coming in Ketchikan, um, in the next three years through 2020, nearly $200 million in construction contracts for Ketchikan. Um, this will include resurfacing of much of the Tongas Highway, Tongas Avenue. Uh, we have 108 billion in construction contracts on the Ketchikan Road system, and then the 96.8 billion in event access-related construction projects coming your way. Um, in 2018, Ketchikan is going to receive approximately 68 million in construction contracts. For the portion of South Coast region's total construction program, that's about 30%, so we are spending a fair amount of our annual budget on, for construction projects in the Ketchikan area. Uh, to get into projects that the state has done in Ketchikan over the last construction season, we replaced the Trowlers Creek Bridge, um, cost us about $1.6 million, the work was conducted by Orion Marine Contractors. And then we did the Tongas Highway illumination upgrade, put a bunch of luminaires on North Tongas Highway, approximately $4.2 million was done for us by the Swanson General Contractors. Um, over at the airport, using some FAA funds for this project, we did an ARF building renovation, um, modified the ARF building, which is Airport Rescue and Firefighting Building, to accommodate a larger fire truck that was needed because of the larger aircraft coming into the Ketchikan Airport. About a million and a half dollar project, and it was done by Harbor Construction. Um, some smaller level streets in Ketchikan, Roosevelt Drive and Franklin Road, completely repaved both of those roads, it was done for us by CCON, cost of about a million and And getting, moving into projects that we still have ongoing in construction, um, the Shelter Cove Road Project, stage two of that, uh, construction cost of approximately 11.4 billion, we are still working out there, spend the day out there, that's why I have quite a red nose, such a beautiful day in Ketchikan today. I brought my rain gear, but I did not bring my sunscreen, so. Waterstream Trestle Number Two, this is a really interesting project, um, very tight, all the, all of the homes right in there. Um, it's quite unique because Dawson Construction built the original trestle that they are now replacing, and here they are back, 20-some years later or more, um, doing reconstruction of the project. It's about a three-year construction project, $23.9 million worth of work going on there. So it's in 2007, or 2017, projects total of approximately $44 million in construction work in Ketchikan. So things that are coming in 2000, in our 2018 season, the Front Mills Stedman Project, I'm sure you're all familiar with, it's right outside your window here. Um, we are starting on this project, starting from the Deermont End, um, working towards the Tunnel End, um, two-year project, and approximately $9.7 million worth of work and done by CCON. Shoreline Drive covert replacement, this is a small project through big, large, and occulted on Shoreline Drive, we've had some flooding issues with, um, a lot of upward development kinda caused more runoff than this covert could handle, so about a $500,000 project could be put in this summer. Um, along Tongas Avenue, we are doing some maintenance paving, um, to try and get the pavement in a little better condition along here, about 250,000 worth of work, and we are expecting this to start next week. If you can just keep this nice weather here for another week, it would be awesome. The waterfall bridges on North Tongas Highway, uh, we have to replace the project for both of those bridges. This project will come up with this summer, some work maybe this fall, and then predominantly in the spring and summer of next year, approximately $10 million project.
That's what I have for you this evening.
Any questions?
To answer any questions.
Yeah, a couple of them. The first one is, in what is it, July, you're gonna do something with the Ketchikan Creek Bridge over here and I, are you gonna, is there still gonna be one-way traffic or is it gonna be totally blocked off or what?
We're gonna, this Garrett Paul, I'm the project manager on Front Mill Stedman. That's gonna have to take half with construction, so we will be doing one lane flag during that time.
That was the basic question. The other question has to do with part of the Tongus to the north of the tunnel. And you said you're going to fix up the bad spots, I think, this summer. Is that gonna be a contractor, is that gonna be DOT itself?
It's going to be a contractor.
Okay. Then the other one has to do with that same piece of road. And you said there were several pieces of it, like underneath and some other things like that, but the whole thing from Holy Creek to the, basically the tunnel is gonna get repaved in 2019?
Yes.
Okay. Last question. Shelter Cove Road, the timing and when's it gonna be open, 'cause we're all waiting.
I don't think it's going to be this year.
Okay.
We are working on getting that project restarted. We did have some unfortunate luck with the contractor. But we ended up terminating that contractor. The project went to their bonding company. We're currently working on getting that work restarted with a new contractor through the bonding company. So, um, that's taking a very amount of time and effort. I'm, we're hopeful that we're going to get some work done on it this summer. There are several stream crossings within the project as it stands right now today that are just banned with temporary bridges. They're fish culverts. There's a very short fish window that has to, in which we can do work in there. We do not think we're gonna make that this year, so at best, we're not gonna have those culverts put in until spring, like next year. So it's probably looking at not this year, probably the end of next year for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yes. You bet. We're gonna break. Sorry.
The world waits for duty.
We're back on.
There she is.
We're back in session. Everybody's here but Councilmember Zingy.
No pressure.
But we'll wait patiently.
She's making an entrance.
She forgot her cape though.
She's got a zip line in here.
All right. That brings us down to three, um, Hey Amendment One to Contract Seventeen Forty-Three Two Thousand Eighteen, Two Thousand Twenty Dock Vendors Program. I brought this up, um, I was wondering if somebody could make a motion and I'll talk to it. You guys can do what you'd like.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, go ahead, Dick.
Uh, I move the City Council to approve Amendment Number One to Contract Number Seventeen Forty-Three Two Thousand Eighteen, Two Thousand Twenty Dock Vendor Program and direct the City Manager to execute the amendment to the dock vendor leases on behalf of the City Council.
Sort of. Move in second. Um, I brought this up because I started hearing from, you know, nobody knows, you know, they did the bidding, you know, for this stuff and these guys are paying, you know, twelve to fifteen thousand a month on these. And then they started seeing what the changes were. I was happy to see that, and I've talked to, you know, McDonald, but I've talked to the duck guy and some others. And, um, they sat down and talked to the Bull, um, to Steve, the Ports and Harbor Board, and made some changes that everybody seems to be happy with down there at berth three. I mean, it's not everything. I hate to change anything that these guys sat down and did or tried to add or take away. Um, it seems that berth one, um, everybody seems to be happy. Berth fours, um, I haven't had any comments on, but, um, um, so for myself, I think, um, if we could pass this, um, if you guys got some input, um, go ahead and, um, and so we can do. Dick?
Yeah, I, I agree with the fact that, uh, well, what the amendment says and the fact that those booths are too close on three. The thing I do disagree with, and I'm gonna make some type of a, a motion that it doesn't happen, we, we should only move one booth. And that gives plenty of space in the where it's at for them to have the space they've been used to. Put that one booth over at the Rock Garden, like was agreed to. But putting one booth in the front and the beginning of the shelter completely barricades over fifty, at least fifty percent of the entry into that place. So I think we oughta just move one booth, leave it this year and see what happens. 'Cause that spreads them out, lets them do what they wanna do. And that's a staff decision, so I'm probably gonna, however I need to do it, I'll make a motion that we direct staff that only one booth is moved.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the table if you had an amendment?
I, I, I'm, uh, well, there's not an amendment to the, I can amend the motion that, that gives direction to the staff that only one, only one booth is moved to the Rock Garden.
That absurd. Do we have?
He wants to amend the amendment.
Uh, I'm not amending amendment because that, that is not part of the amendment. Location of the booths is staff and our decision. It's not in this amendment. If I'm understanding correctly. It's not in the amendment.
Well, um, the amendment, Carl, says we move two booths, don't we?
I can clarify.
Clarify. Please, clarify.
Technically, the way the program is set up, I'm the authorized authority to move the booths. If the council wants to move one booth, they wanna move two booths, I will defer to council direction.
I guess, um, to make it quick, fast and easy, um, do we wanna move one or two? How many, how many wanna remove two booths? How many wanna move? If I raise a hand. How many wanna remove one booth? Okay, you got direction on one booth. And now be in the Rock Garden.
So they both be in the Rock Garden or one?
No, just one. The other two be where they're at.
This one. That gives everybody plenty of room.
And we'll space out the two remaining ones a little bit more.
Yes.
Okay. And they still get their handheld signs?
That would be in the actual amendment because that's, that's actually in the contract that they can't have them right now.
Do they get their sandwich boards?
That is not in this proposed amendment. And if you wanna change that, I'd like to speak to it first.
If you wanna make a motion, you can. Otherwise, do you wanna speak to it?
I'll make a motion to have the sandwich board.
Do we have a second? Moved in second for sandwich boards. Steve, did you say you wanted to say something about it?
I'd like to just give you a little update. Um, and this is a, it's gonna go a little bit past that because it's part of it. But one of the speakers up here said that the, the booths and the, and the sandwich board signs became, were like a barrier for herding, and that's exactly why we got them away from the top of the ramp down, because they were being a dam. Um, we've changed things at one and it's working very well. Uh, we've created a corridor that goes right in front of their booths. We could probably let them, put them at one if we wanted to. It's wide enough there and i- it's not gonna impact that. Putting, uh, letting them have the signs over at three, it's really tight where we have these booths. And so putting the signs there, even if they're in with the area that we're gonna let them stand, it is gonna, I think, impact passenger flow a little bit. How we had the contract in the past, if you wanted a sandwich board, board sign, it counted against your total signage. You were allowed four signs, no more than ten square feet per sign, for a total of forty square feet. If you put one-sided sandwich board sign out, then you lost one of your other signs. If you put a double-sided one out, you lost two of your signs. So it wasn't adding any signs, it was substituting signs. So if you wanna add it, then that's how I would change the contract language to read, that, the way it used to be, that it would substitute for the signs you have on the booth. One of the changes we did enact this last winter was to, signs attached to the booth have to be flush to the booth. A loophole, and these guys always look for loopholes. And Mark can attest to our discussion last Tuesday night. And at first, I think you thought it was a little crazy, but as we, more and more we talk, you see, that's how these guys think. You know, ah, they're always looking for the loophole. But they would attach them, but they would attach it just to the corner of the booth, so the sign would be sticking up three feet from the booth. Or, or somebody would take a sign and stick it, you know, five feet above the booth. Or somebody would put an American flag flying up there. "How can I make them take out an American flag?" Because it wasn't in the contract, I'm un-American. So the other guys would complain. So we took all that crap out. Same thing was the hand signs. I never, we never had to address hand signs because they weren't in, nobody had them. They would, they would stand there with their pamphlets. And then one year, somebody started, they put their pamphlet on the back of their clipboard and they stood there like that. It's like, all right, that's about right. And then a couple of years later, somebody said, oh, they made a little, a little sign that went like this. And then last year, the year before, somebody started, you know, like, you know, a little two-by-three foot sign. And then last year, some of these guys had three-by-four signs. Both people outside the booth had it. Somebody inside the booth would have one. Somebody leaning out the back door of the booth would have a sign. And so we said, no. I said, no hand signs. We're gonna address this. So at Tuesday night's meeting, I said, if, if the recommendation is to let them have hand signs, then give me some size. So they settled on nine by twelve, which is basically an eight-and-a-half by eleven piece of paper with a border on it. Double-sided, um, and only on the two people outside the booth. People inside can't be doing this. People leaning out the door can't be doing this. So that's how we drafted this amendment.
Julie?
Just quick, is there a limit on the size of the sandwich board?
Well, it's, it used to be twelve feet, no more, you know, no more than twelve square feet. Uh, that was in the old contract. If you wanna limit, I would recommend limiting it to the ten, like the other signs. But if you wanna say twelve, I'll award it as twelve, but it would still be a substitute for the other signs. I, I wouldn't, I would not recommend letting them have additional signs above the four signs that are already allowed.
I was just thinking, there should be a limit because of it creating a barrier. So to get away from that, make it a ten-square-foot sign.
If you're, if you're gonna allow sandwich board signs, um, I would recommend not letting them, you know, letting us pick the location of the signs. Like, right now, um, it says we can pick the operating area. Now, for, in the past, we said basically six feet around the booths. And that was easy because I could go like this and say, that was it. I didn't have to draw lines and things like that. Down at one, um, we've got them about this far from the bull rail. And then we've got eleven feet between the booths because there's a light pole where the second booth is. So we pushed it up against the light pole yesterday. But unless we wanna push the other booth out into berth one, it's not gonna be twelve feet apart to give them six feet between the two booths. So they're eleven, so they get five-and-a-half feet. I think that's fair. And then we pushed the other booth eleven feet away from the, the second booth. I gave them six feet in front. I only gave about three-and-a-half or four feet on the berth one side because I don't want them standing out there. We've got a great highway of people going through there now. And the one gentleman said, people were walking out in the street and that, that's not happening now. That's the great thing about berth one and the great thing, how we got berth three set up now, is that we, we're using our own barriers to keep especially the non-prebook passengers, the ones that are not going straight to a bus, the ones that just wanna go shopping, or maybe they're gonna go look for an independent tour and wanna talk, they're having to walk by the booths now. Um, and so i- it's, it's beautiful. There's people staying out of basically Spruce Millway and the berth one and berth two bus lane. That, there's, it's, it's much, much safer. Dick's down there, I know he can attest to that.
Yeah, I would echo what he said. Even though at first I had some heartburn with some of the barriers and ropes, but watching it work, it's working.
The sign holders are happy, the booth holders at one are happy. The, the, the three, they're just not happy because they're a little further away. That's why I can support moving one over to the Rock Garden. That'll put that one in a little better location. The other two will be pretty good and we'll space them out a little bit. But if you're gonna allow sandwich board signs, I would not let, let us say, yeah, they can't be in front of the booth. Well, you can put them in between the two booths and within your six feet. Maybe you can do that. But I really don't wanna disrupt what we have as a pretty clean pedestrian pathway going at one and what we're trying to do at three. And we're really gonna need to keep it clean at three, um, when we have almost five thousand passengers coming off the Bliss in about two more weeks.
Dave, you had a question?
Yeah, so the idea behind allowing them to have handhold signs, is that to make up for not having the sandwich board signs?
Yeah, and I know Mr. McDonald really wants that. And he, he's the one that kinda started the whole hand sign a few years ago. And he really likes his hand signs. He, he likes to use it to catch people's eye. But it was, it was just getting out of hand.
That's the impression I had at the meeting. It was in lieu of...
So if we were, so if we were to go back to sandwich boards, would there be a wild objection in our, other group, Mr. McDonald, to, to ban, banning the handhold signs? Because I, I don't see it.
I, yeah, I think he's the one that's the most adamant about that, but I also heard secondhand today that he was asking if, well, can we at least have our sandwich boards leaning up against the booth? And that's basically what we're gonna let him do with the other signs. You know, I say flush against the booth, but if they're just, if they're sticking out a few inches at the bottom because they got them leaning up and then clipped at the top, that's fine by me. If they wanna do that with their sandwich board sign, I'm fine with that too.
That's the impression I got, is they just wanna have them in their area, not out.
Well, we have little signs, um, you know, because they can have tours, they can have picture on or whatever. The thing is, I just don't wanna have them holding up rack cards trying to yell at people to come because then we get into hockey. I want them assigned so they can stand there and if somebody wants to come over and talk to them instead of, otherwise we'll walk backwards. Because those, the other things are too small.
But if I'm understanding this correctly, you're saying they can have that as long as it's leaned up against the booth and not open it out in the middle?
It's really not a sandwich board sign if it's, if it's up against the booth.
Right.
And that's what some are doing right now, that they have them up against the booth.
So...
And they didn't, they didn't throw them away. They still have them, but we made them push them up against the booth.
Right.
Because they're concerned people are standing in front of them, people can't see. All right, so Bob?
First of all, I'd like those guys to know that it's not the city's intent by any means to put them out of the business. I certainly appreciate the, the business they bring, Ketchikan, the work they do here and the fact that they stay here. But, you know, the cruise industry has cruise industry to run. Those guys have a business to run and the city of Ketchikan has a port to run. In some, somewhere, we gotta figure out how everybody's gonna work together to do this. Just for some background information, I was in Juneau recently and I went down with the docks just to see how they do things. Now, their docks are on buses on. They have a wide, it's probably as wide as this room. And it wouldn't, and it goes for the full length of their port. And their booths are like five-by-five.
They look like this.
Yep, that's what they look like. Like, there's eleven of them in a row. They pay thirty thousand dollars for those.
For the season, not for the month, for the season.
Yeah, for the season. And there's three of those on that, on their dock. You can sell all three of them at one time in a separate area.
There's thirty-three booths, basically.
And they, they have one sign that hangs on the front of it. Everybody has a name card. They stay inside of their booth and they have to have the name and the phone number of the operator posted. So, I mean, and I'm not saying that that's what we should do, but it's different in every port how they do that, based on the configuration of what we have. Situation down here where we have no room at berth three, so we're gonna have to try some things to make it work. And that, with the ships we have this year, if we put bigger ships and there's more traffic coming through those areas, it's gonna change again. It's not gonna stay consistent, so you, we gotta be flexible on all ends of this thing to make it work. And, um, sometimes, you know, you gotta try it for a while to find out if it's gonna work or if it's not. I mean, that's the idea.
So right now, we have an, oh, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, I agree with Bob. I think it's important we keep in mind that we do want these folks to prosper. They are paying a lot of money, okay? But a couple of things to consider. All of the proposed changes were presented to these folks before they bid. So when they talk about what they're paying for per month, they all went in with open eyes and they all bid. So the deal that we're already modifying was good enough to bid on last December, okay? The cruise ship season's, what, two weeks old? They're the experts, I'm not, but I don't want this to turn into a three alarm fire two weeks into the season because they don't have sandwich boards either. They knew they weren't gonna have those signs, they bid. If it was so objectionable to those folks, or they thought so detrimental to, to their businesses, they had the opportunity to not bid. And yet they chose to. So they made an informed decision. This wasn't sprung on them after the fact, okay? I think that the compromises, um, between the city, the cruise industry and these guys are, everybody's, I, I think, is, is a participant. And some of the things that the Ports and Harbors Director was unwilling to move on, I agreed with. Mountain Point's the perfect example. They can talk about it being taken away. The guys that they're talking about, they pay those launch fees to use that ramp. The tour operators pay zero to use that. So they're down there making a profit. The guy that has a day off is paying his eight bucks to launch it. So I, I, I think if we modify where the booths are located, that might be a good starting point. Instead of making too many wholesale changes right out of the gate, let's see how this, let's see how this evolves. Like you said, when bigger ships come, it's gonna change again. We're built out. We're cramming as much as we can into a really finite space. And it is gonna have to be tweaked, but maybe we should let the season evolve a little bit. It's May eighteenth, seventeenth. Maybe we should see what happens for a little bit longer yet.
All right. Let's make some decisions. So we have an amendment to add the, um, for, um, the
Sandwich boards.
Sandwich boards. Call the roll.
Cage?
Yes.
Zingy?
What am I, to add the sandwich? We're gonna add the sandwich boards, no.
Severson?
No.
Kuss?
No.
Flora?
No.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isim?
No.
Okay, so now we're back to the original where we're just adding the, uh, move in a booth, one booth, so we can give direction and have the sign. Bob?
And, and I just wanted to go back to that sandwich board stuff. During the conversation, you discussed with the gentleman at the podium that between the borough and the city in regards to all those kind of things, that you were gonna kinda look at it. So I, I appreciate not doing a knee-jerk reaction and take a look at it.
All right, let's call a roll on the main motion.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to one. That brings us down to seven A five, Budget Transfer Alaska Department of Environmental Conservation Creek Sampling. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council authorize a budget transfer in the amount of thirty thousand dollars from appropriated reserves of the Public Works Sales Tax Fund to the Engineering Division's Two Thousand Eighteen Engineering and Architectural Services Account, Account Number Six Forty-Dash-O-Two, and direct the City Manager and Public Works Director to undertake such water quality testing of Carlana Creek, Hoodley Creek and Ketchikan Creek as they determine appropriate in anticipation of potential regulatory enforcement action under the federal Clean Water Act.
Second.
Move in second. But, uh, Mark, did you want anything?
No, it sounds like we're just trying to get out in front of this for some testing that's gonna happen anyway. It sounds like a good idea.
Bob?
If you go onto ADC's website, the, the study that they did, it, it's posted on there. It's very, very detailed into the fact of collecting inverbets and everything else in the streams. And I have some concerns about what the, the end game is here. Understanding that there is a tremendous amount of background minerals in our water. And there's no way that the city of Ketchikan should be held responsible because of that attenuated, uh, chemical of mineral. So, um, I, I think it's a great idea that we do this and we also have water quality samples from the, the reservoir, so we have some idea what's going downstream. But I think it's a good plan.
Anybody else? Call a roll.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to seven eighty-six, approving transaction documents for the Grand Alaska Number Jack Show easement for the placement of Rockburn in Thomas Basin. We have an, an alternate motion, do you want me to?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to approve the transaction documents for the city, T-Gal, uh, John Thompson, or Dawson easement, uh, for the placement of the Rockburn in Thomas Basin and future construction of the waterfront promenade. I override the City Manager to execute the transaction documents on behalf of the City Council and direct staff to take such actions as may be required to amend the transaction documents and address the issue detailed in the city attorney private. That's the one I wanna do. I wanna make sure that we do it. Yeah. Such to amend transaction documents submitted to the City Council for formal approval, uh, consideration and approval. That's one where we approve what we have today. Is that correct? That redirect one?
That's alternate motion number one.
Correct. Correct. So we approve it as it is today and then the transfers of property and stuff will take place, um, as, as is required.
Second.
Move in second. Bob, do you want anything?
No, I think that, uh, and of course, in the correspondence that we received, that there's already been some, uh, movement on those agreements that, um, it's not gonna affect, uh, I think, the, the end product except for the fact that the easement may move out a little bit further. And if the agreement weren't to go through, we'd be just back to the original anyway.
Anybody else? Call a roll.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Isim?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
And Severson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. Brings down to seven eighty-seven, ordinance eighteen, eighteen eighty-one, pending kitchen on misspoke code section five, four, zero, zero, two, one. Tell use of Third Avenue and Shonbar Road restricted concerning sightseeing vehicles on Third Avenue, Shonbar Road, first reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to approve in first reading ordinance number eighteen dash eighteen eighty-one, amending KMC section five point four zero, point zero two one, entitled the use of Third Avenue, Shonbar Road restricted concerning sightseeing vehicles on Third Avenue and Shonbar Road and establish an effective date.
Move in second. Bob, do you want to add anything?
No, I, you know, there's gonna be times when we have all this construction going on, um, or, or we could have a, a fire or accident or whatever, and I think that, uh, to give the Chief of Police and staff the option to be able to utilize this bypasses warranted. We already have buses, school buses, dump trucks, low boys, heavy equipment on, on the road already.
There's one broken, blocked the whole thing for about three hours in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
It's, it's old boat chain.
Okay, anybody else? Call a roll.
Isim?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kuss?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us down to seven B one, Beaver Falls Hydro Project Relicensing Presentation. We've been waiting anxiously all night.
Make it snappy. We, we all love fur.
That's what, I'm good, thanks, Bob.
I, I don't know anything about it. It takes a minute to warm up. It's, it's coming to life.
Yep, it's coming through. Starting to brighten up. Getting more power. Beat that turbine up a little more.
It's like, no.
Well, good evening. My name is Jenny Holstrom. I am a senior project engineer for KPU's Electric Division. And Mr. Amalon has asked me to give an overview tonight of the upcoming relicensing of the Beaver Falls project. And I will try to keep it brief since it's late and this is a topic that tends to make everybody nod off. So, I'm sure you all know a little bit about the Beaver Falls Hydroelectric Project. It generates electricity from Upper and Lower Silvis Lakes located above George Inlet at the end of South Tongas Highway. Within the development, or within the project are two developments. Um, on the upstream end is the Silvis Development, which consists of a dam on Upper Silvis Lake and, um, from which water is piped down to a powerhouse on the shore of Lower Silvis Lake. And that's the bunker-looking building there on the right. Downstream of that is the Beaver Falls Development. It consists of a dam on Lower Silvis Lake and a diversion on Beaver Falls Creek. And the water is then conveyed to a powerhouse, um, at sea level, which you see on the left there. The project produces, I think it's about thirty percent of Ketchikan's annual demand, so it's an important one to us. Because it occupies federal lands, the Beaver Falls Hydroproject is required to be licensed by the Federal Energy is required to be licensed by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, um, just like your other two projects are. Um, until recently, a nonoriginal FERC license had a term of thirty years, which is what our current Beaver Falls license is. Um, our current license was issued in nineteen ninety-four. So it is set to expire in twenty twenty-four. And the reason I'm talking to you now, um, with six years still to go before it expires is because relicensing is a long and complex process. Um, it involves consultation with stakeholders, which include, um, a lot of state and federal agencies, native tribes, corporations, um, landholders and the public. And numerous studies to gather information. After an application is filed, FERC then reviews the information, prepares environmental documents, and decides what requirements to include in the new licenses. In doing this, FERC, um, FERC's objective is to give equal consideration to hydropower development, but also to recreation, um, the environment, and cultural resources. So hydropower is just one, one thing that they look at in the process. And there are three different processes that, that we may choose from. I, I don't think I need to go into detail on them, um, just to say that, uh, the default is now the integrated licensing process. And that's probably the one that we'll, we'll end up using. It involves FERC from the beginning, and it has strict deadlines, which is probably a good thing because there's less chance of the process getting bogged down or hijacked or veering off into, into strange directions. So in the next few months, this is one of the decisions that we'll be making. And as we get started in the relicensing process, I think it would be good to think about, um, what our assumptions and expectations will be for the new license. My initial thoughts are that we will not be proposing any significant changes to the project. Um, that we won't encounter any significant environmental concerns such as endangered species or anadromous fish. I assume KPU will be the sole applicant. And I assume that, um, the state will continue to waive the water quality certification requirements. I expect that we will need a special use permit from the Forest Service since the majority of the project is located on Forest Service lands. We will need to, um, update, um, numerous resource management plans, um, update FERC exhibits that show how the project operates, um, which we've actually al- already been starting on this past year by updating project boundary maps. And we'll need to conduct a number of studies, um, to gather information and support the NAPR process. Um, we can expect a forty-year license term this time. That's FERC's new default, and that's good news. And I'm told to expect the unexpected because there is always something. There are three, three stages of relicensing. Um, stage one, which will essentially be next year, is the initial consultation. Um, that's where we identify the stakeholders. We provide them with information on the project. We can, uh, communicate KPU's expectations for how the project will operate. And we, um, identify, um, information gaps and questions we need to answer. Following that is stage two, which are, uh, studies. That's essentially two years of studies, um, following which we analyze the results and incorporate those into our application with FERC. And then after we submit our application, uh, FERC reviews that. They, um, solicit comments and conditions from stakeholders. And they prepare an environmental assessment for the project. And then after, after about six years, hopefully we have a, a new license. So right now, we are in the early stages of preparing for relicensing. Um, we need to do some strategic planning, um, clarifying expectations, as I mentioned earlier, and evaluating what our opportunities are, what risks we may encounter in the process. Um, we have included money in this year's budget to bring a consultant on board to help us with the regulatory work and the studies. And as we get time, as I get time, we're starting to organize our compliance and operation records, update our project descriptions, um, compile historic documents. Um, all of these will be needed as we reach out to stakeholders during initial consultations. So this slide shows an overview of my anticipated schedule for relicensing. Um, we have started initial planning. And we will need to have a contract in place with a regulatory consultant, um, before the end of this year. And we will need to start our outreach to stakeholders early in twenty nineteen. The formal process begins with filing of the notice of intent and the pre-application documents, um, between May and October of next year. Uh, but thinking about the timing of site visits and the inaccessibility of the project in winter and spring, uh, realistically, that'll probably need to be in by June of next year. Then the following two years, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, will be the study seasons. Um, we'll be onsite, uh, doing all sorts of, of studies in the creek, um, wetlands, um, wildlife, just anything, just about anything you can think of, we'll be doing up there. Then, let's see, we'll be following, uh, filing our draft license application in March of twenty twenty-two, which will then be reviewed by stakeholders. We'll incorporate comments into the final license application due in October of twenty twenty-two. Then FERC gets to review the application, um, do their environmental process, and, um, write the EA. And in October twenty twenty-four, we should see a new license. Now, after that, KPU will likely have a lot of work, um, to do coming into compliance with new license terms, but that will be another presentation for another year. Now, budget. Uh, relicensing is a very expensive exercise. It will involve a great deal of time from KPU staff as well as consultants and contractors. Depending on the issues that arise, I estimate that the regulatory work will cost somewhere between two hundred and fifty thousand and eight hundred thousand dollars. And the various studies that are required, probably between three hundred fifty thousand and a million dollars. Now, the good news is that the Beaver Falls project, um, should not be a complex one to relicense. Um, there are only two property owners, KPU and the Forest Service. Um, there are no salmon in the creek. Uh, there's no longer hatchery. So I think it's reasonable to hope that it may come in on the low end of the estimate. Uh, so to begin with, we budgeted six hundred thousand dollars for the work. But as I mentioned earlier, we do need to expect some unexpected things. During the last Beaver Falls relicensing in the nineteen nineties, it came out that, uh, some of you remember this, that Kate Fox had, uh, selected project lands under the Alaska Native Claims Settlement Act. And, uh, several years later, lawsuit, uh, land transfer. Um, we, we resolved the issues. Uh, but looking back at our records this past week, it looks like it cost us about a million and a half dollars last time around to relicense the project. So, but I think a key to keeping the costs down and obtaining a license that, um, we can live with is some good planning upfront, um, establishing goals, developing an internal strategy, identifying stakeholder interests early and communicating with those stakeholders on a regular basis. And then, um, looking for opportunities to, you know, add value to the project and the community. So I hope that gives you a quick general overview of what we'll be doing for the next six or seven years. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Dave?
Um, yeah, I noticed on one of the early, first assumptions that KPU would be the only applicant. Um, how would there be someone else be an applicant?
Anybody can apply. They have to follow the same process. So, um, we would know about it. They'd be parallel processes. Um, KPU would be best positioned to, if they were competing licenses, KPU would be the best position. We've operated it. We have a good track record. We're a municipal utility. Um, so I, I think it's unlikely that anybody else would apply. Theoretically, somebody could, and there are processes for that too. But I, I would not expect that to happen.
Jake?
Yeah, I'm gonna take a different approach to this. We're looking at two million dollars, maybe, feeding contractors. And if the answers come out the way they probably will, that's not what we've done. So I'm not too sure. We shouldn't approach the delegation upon extending this thing for, say, fifty years, whatever it needs to be done. And I'm making an assumption. We, we make reports and safety and all that stuff on this every five, ten years. We're sending reports in on this, these projects. There's a routine thing I know we do.
Yeah, we, um, we send in, um, annual reports. We have a, a FERC inspector out in, um, every two years to inspect the project and an independent engineer every five years.
So basically, it's a sound, safe project. And I still think we ought to just test the delegation with the idea, the one they extended, uh, because there is no problems for the most part. It's wasted time. And two, that they, we ask them to give us ownership of the lakes and the property so that there is no, what you say, somebody comes in and decides they want that land and plays a game with us. I think we ought to try them. And they, they may say, hey, we'll fly kite. But this, this, this is just a regulatory process in the federal government that keeps them in business. And it's of no value.
Bob?
I think the National Hydropower Association has been working on FERC and licensing for years. Matter of fact, I think they, uh, fended off, uh, a proposal to reduce it to, um, having to do this every thirty years or something. It didn't make any sense. I think it is, uh, pretty overboard in what they're gonna require us to go through in order to relicense this project. You'd almost think they'd be able to send you your last permit and said, what's changed? And then you make note to what those changes are. But that's not the way FERC, uh, works. And, um, if I remember right, in our CQ meeting, Carl, they were saying it's gonna be, you know, almost ten million to do that we have, uh, Tai and Swan in the future, something like that. Uh, so, I mean, it's, it's an expensive process.
And, you know, each respective state has a delegation. And I think the prospects, Councilman Kus, are not good. They do it for us, they're gonna have to do it for Tennessee, New York. I mean, that, that's why the process is. So everybody isn't putting in special requests for, uh, exemptions.
I, all I'm saying, all I'm doing is making a suggestion. We test the waters with them. They may feel with the climate that's back there right now that the regulatory system is overburdened. And they may be able to tweak it somehow or other. But I think we ought to lay it on the table is what this is, the costing it is to us and is, and question whether it is worth the value and the requirement. I mean, that's, what are you, it's six years of work and maybe a couple of million dollars. And, uh, it, to me, it's federal government on your back.
Never heard such a-
New project, maybe.
Basically, my understanding of how this works is to maintain that we're taking care of our water. And not, they're making sure that we're not giving people bad water.
Um, they wanna make sure that, um, the resource is developed in the best way it can be. Um, another purpose is to, um, FERC is equally concerned about the environment, uh, recreation and cultural resources. So every relicensing process, um, we're required to bring the, that information up to date. So the hydro development is actually only about a quarter of what they're looking at.
So although we may be, we're very good about what we do with our resources, the reason they're there is to make sure everybody has the same quality of their resources. That's what I, I mean, it'd be great if it could get the proper, but like Bob said, it's, then everybody would be-
Anybody else? Bob?
Um, with the changes that they made with the platforms out at Foreland Lake, we did find out that it was easier going in cooperative with all these agencies. So there are a number, a number of the agencies involved, Forest Service, fishing game, all this kind of stuff. And there's all kinds of issues with either species or plants that they could, they could bring up at the time. Um, and so it was like, what can we do to make this go easier and quicker? And I think that was a good approach. We got through the process quicker, I think.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. All right, that brings us down to- Yep, you got a light. Steve, can you hit us a light?
Yeah, we're a little dark up here. Be surprised. That's okay, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, vouchers, daily news, four thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move to approve vouchers for the Ketchikan Daily News in the amount of four thousand nine hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-two cents.
Move in second. Call the roll.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Seaberton?
Yeah.
Kus?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Um, manager's report.
Carl? Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, um, we did include in the packet the report on the day of unity concert at birth four. Unless the council directs otherwise, I'm gonna approve that request. Um, we laid on the table tonight, uh, a report relative to the coating failure on the birth free barge. We're gonna continue to monitor that, uh, for the course of the summer. And we'll be talking to Vega relative to what's gonna be the permanent fix. And keep the, uh, council advised. Uh, relative to the three remaining executive sessions tonight, I would request that the council, uh, do the negotiations. We'll catch can dot company first. Issues relative to renewal of the peace health, please, second. And then, uh, issues pertaining to Officer Perez, third. And that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
I was gonna do it totally different. Um, Carl, um, the road up to Keela, you know, up there where the Mormon church is, are we in charge of taking care of those sidewalks and everything? I had somebody say the bushes are gonna take over the sidewalk here, please, so.
Check it out.
I'd hope I'd bring it out tonight. Um, anybody have any questions on manager's report? Bob and then Julie.
So on the, um, lay on the table with the, the birth free barge overhaul. Is the coating on the top be different than the coating on the bottom?
Port Harpers Dr. Steve Copron. It's all SRAM coat. I don't know if it's an exact match for what's on the rest of the barge. Um, but it's, I believe it's the same, same SRAM coat, basic product.
Well, you know, I'm just concerned if it's failing on the surface like this, what are we gonna end up with in, what's under the water? And how do we test that, uh, to make sure that, I guess, it's doing, it doesn't, it's not cracking and doing what it's supposed to do, I guess?
As near as I can tell, their, their issues with temperature and humidity control and that were the most challenging on the top deck. It was much easier to, to keep their containment intact, working on the bottom and working on the sides. Uh, the real challenge was on that top deck. But we're gonna keep an eye on it as best we can. They did agree as part of that first change order that they are going to fund a dive inspection at year two and just prior to the end of year five, before the warranty for, uh, expires. Uh, but if we see anything on our own, uh, we'll bring it to their attention. But if we see anything on our own, we'll bring it to their attention. They were very responsive last week when we pointed out these two failures on the areas of the top deck that we assumed were good because we hadn't had any real failures yet. So we're gonna keep an eye on that. What I told Carl was that any further failures in that area, the more we get, the more likely we're gonna recommend just probably taking that, the finish off that top deck, and then make a decision on whether or not we wanted to try them, have them try to put that same stuff back down, or do we want to go with something else?
Julie?
Just for the council to look at the map for my rock festival on Birth Four. Charlie stayed till the end in case we had questions, but be sure and look at the map. And then there's an agenda there, too, and if you have any questions, you can ask either myself or Charlie about what's gonna go on.
Okay, seeing. All right. Anybody else on Carl's report? City Clerk's five.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Attorney's five.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Future agenda items. Go ahead, Bob.
At some point in the future, I'd like to propose that we have a work session in regards to strategies and operations through City Ketchikan. We're making some decisions here that have long-range implications 30 years out or so, and we have some issues in regards to operations of the, continued operations of the city that I think that we need to sit down and just talk about. It's difficult to do it at the table, but I think there's a lot of things in regards to, you know, employee management and replacing the employees that will leave. We've got, we're down three mechanics, I think, here after Dennis leaves, and trying to find somebody to replace him with the skill sets that we need, very difficult. And of course, when we talk about employees with a specific, you know, skill set, then we have to look at our compensation package to see if we're really competitive or not. But that's not just it. There's some operational issues that we could probably talk about in the city to see if we could save some money and get more efficient. But I think it's, probably not in the summer, but I think somewhere in the fall, we should have a, I don't want to call it a retreat, but I think it's a strategy session. And we have to do, I think, before budget.
Mayor, council comments. Dick?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Chitty?
The Committee on Healthcare Transparency met. We, Jason Harris graciously accepted the chair position, and George Schaefer was the vice chair. We had the meeting even though we had found out that Senate Bill 105 had passed both the House and the Senate, and it's just waiting for the governor to sign, so hopefully that'll happen, and we'll reconvene if it doesn't, and build it then.
Thank you. Charlie?
Was that yesterday's museum board meeting? And the numbers have been really wonderful, and respect to everybody enjoying the museum. And the first two days, they had 700 people in there.
Excellent.
So, and the Burrow Shuttle that runs free, they had it where the fee is, you get in both the heritage and the museum for $9, or each of them is $6, so you get a break. But you can actually walk outside and catch that shuttle, and it works out to where it actually drops them at, that's the next stop. So it's been, yeah, apparently they go around, and then they hit the heritage center, and people are really enjoying it, so. I only have one other thing, was people upset about people flicking their cigarettes, and I'm just gonna bring it up because I was asked to, so I don't know if we need to do some kind of like, stop littering campaign, or apparently it's in front of the jewelry stores, people smoking and just flicking them into the gutter. And they don't disintegrate. Cigarette butts do not break down or anything, so. If you go by someplace where there's, they could be there 100 years and they still look like cigarette butts faded, but that's all I got.
Julie?
Just one thing, and it's timely, First City Homeless Shelter, they received a note from an anonymous person, well, they know who the person is, but it's an anonymous donor. Whatever businesses in town donate between now and June 1st, they're gonna match that. So if you're a business, and you know a business who's wanting to donate to the homeless shelter, it'll be billed between now and June 1st.
Thank you. Bob?
You know, I had the opportunity to show some individuals around town, and I've said it before, but Ketchikan is a fantastic place to live. What we got going on here is pretty amazing, and especially nice with the weather that we've had the last couple of days. But, you know, we went through by the shipyard, 230-some people working, downtown core, busy, people all over the place, crew ships in, a lot of activity, construction going on. The amount of money the state is spending here in DOT projects, and as you drive by, you see people outside working in their yard, cleaning them up, and flowers are coming up. Ketchikan's a wonderful place to live, so just wanna make sure all the stuff that we do here, that we still have a great community.
Thanks, Bob. Dave?
Yeah, did what Bob just said. It was nice to drive by and see the Tasleena floating. It's safely floated from the right oxted ock.
Yeah.
And, yeah. You have to be looking at, as, you know, obviously, the second ship will get done in years, so then what comes after that? Because you've got 200 and some jobs, that's necessary.
Eric?
Lots of road projects, lots of construction. Potholes are gonna go away, we're gonna have some nice pavement, it's gonna be a little inconvenient, gonna reroute some traffic, but it's gonna bring a lot of money into the community in a couple of years from now. Lots of nice, clean-looking roads and bridges, looking forward to it.
Excellent. Yeah, we're a busy town. Very good. I have nothing tonight, since we have some executive sessions. Now, Carl, why don't you get a decide which one?
I was being bussed, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's do four first. We have a motion, please. Julie?
Four.
Four.
Okay. Your Honor, I move the City Council to declare that consistent with the City Manager's report dated May 8, 2018, it's in the best interest of the City Council to discuss negotiations of an amendment to the lease and other definitive agreement between the City of Ketchikan, company LLC, related to the expansion of Birth Four, to accommodate larger vessels in an executive session in accordance with the Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A1 entry, which includes the need to discuss subjects and knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Who'd in second it? Call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Cus?
Yes.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Yeah, passes. We'll move it to the other room.
We have a friend here tomorrow.
All right, let's do the three. This is number one, you have to...
Sorry, you were...
We're back in the sex session we made with management. We have now further business. Do we have a motion for the executive session number three?
Your Honor, I think the City Council declared that consistent with the City Attorney's request dated May 4, 2018, it's in the best interest of the City Council to discuss litigation threatened by Brian Perez, and give direction to the City Attorney in handling that matter in executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 204.025A1 entry, which includes the need to discuss subjects, the knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city, and to discuss potential litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege.
Move in second, the caller, please.
Isom?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Cus?
Yep.
Severson?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Gage?
Sure.
We'll recess into executive session.
In your world, perhaps.
We're back on. We come out of the executive session, we gave management direction, so that brings us down to adjournments. Was there one more? I don't know. I think he withdrew one.
He withdrew one.
Yeah. So. Move adjourned? Yep. We're out of here.